This meeting will now come to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Binzbacher.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Patena.
Here.
Councilmember Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Leonie.
Here.
And Council liaison Gilbertson.
Here.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council's special meeting of February 19th, 2019. We have, well, we have two items on our study session agenda this evening. We'll see if we can get to both of them, but we will begin with the Police Department update, and I'll turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Jeff Tyne.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. So continuing with our discussions in advance of the fiscal year 2020 budget process, we wanted to offer an update on activities within our public safety areas. And so first off, we have our police chief Art Miller, who will update you on current activity and response times within the city, but also to focus on initiatives and approaches within the police department itself. So with that, I'll pass it over to Chief Miller.
Thank you very much for hearing me out today. First of all, I just want to start off by talking about the matrix report that was put out last year and some of the recommendations that they made within that report. Some of the things that they talked about had to do with response time and distribution of personnel throughout our city. Having been here for only six months, I've taken a look at that, and I think some of the recommendations are very valid, and I'd like to put them into place so that to see if they actually will come to fruition as far as providing better public service. So one of the suggestions that was made is that we would redistribute or realign our patrol plan. As you can see by the map on the top right, if you look at that large area with the black line underneath it, that was one area that was patrolled by one officer. That was that officer's responsibility. What that map does not depict is there is no straight way to get to anywhere in that area because of terrain and the different neighborhoods and whatnot. So one of the things that we did in looking at this was we changed the patrol plan from 18 different patrol beats to 14. And the next chart will show how we divided that top area depicted on the multicolored map with the green, purple, and kind of a rust-colored area. And so now, instead of having one officer in that area, we have three officers. And again, that is a complete departure from the way the map was set out before, and we're hoping that, given time, that we'll be able to have faster response time and faster responses for calls for service. In addition to the realignment of our beats, we also adjusted the hours as per the suggestion of the matrix report. One of the things that the matrix found was the call load was not compatible with the way we deployed our resources. So what we did in the police department is we adjusted those hours by two hours to make officers start two hours later, which would overlap the call load that we had in our city. Again, this is an adjustment that our officers are going to have to make in terms of their own personal schedules and things like that, but it's something that, to provide the service we need to, I felt that it was necessary to do. I'd also like to talk about something that we did in our department in terms of our detective unit. I increased by two personnel, I reassigned two people to a fraud unit in our detective unit. And the reason I did that was we spent an inordinate amount of time on investigating misdemeanor crimes such as shoplifting and petty thefts and whatnot. And the time that we had to invest in that was such that those cases generally went nowhere. As we all know, fraud is a big thing in our community, not in our community, but in the country, as far as internet fraud, credit card fraud, and elder-type scams and things like that. So the addition of the two personnel to that fraud unit will be a huge asset to our detective unit. In one respect, they will reduce overtime, I'm hoping, anyway, we'll see how it works out in the end, to reduce overtime and then also to free up some of the initial response that our officers take when they take initial reports in the field. I'd like to talk a little bit about our crime statistics, and I just wanted to say that initially, right now, our crime is down by almost 5% overall, and that includes all uniform crime reports. And that's what every police agency in the United States goes by, go by, and that's the UCR. And that includes sexual assaults, robberies, aggravated assaults, burglary, larceny, motor theft vehicle. And we are down in every one of those categories for a total of almost 5%. It's pretty phenomenal that we're able to reduce those in every category. Another thing we did is to revamp our predictive policing. I understand that prior to my being hired here, there was a predictive policing component that I took a look at, and I thought that it was a little bit cumbersome in the way that particular program worked. So I got the resources of a crime analyst that I have worked with before to help reduce crime, and it's all based on predictive policing that's almost real-time. And I've had two officers assigned to that to see how effective that would be preliminarily. We've been doing it for about three months right now, and given the amount of time that we've placed in there, crime is being reduced. What's nice about this is that we don't have to necessarily put handcuffs on people to prevent the crime, we just need to be in a specific area at a specific time. The other thing that's nice about this is that the information that we have is very current, and we don't have to go through a long, laborious effort to change what the routes are that we want our officers to be on. And the other thing is, any officer, regardless of what their assignment is that's working in patrol, all they have to do is drive by an area that we have identified as a potential target to, just to be in that area and just to be visible. I've done this in three other assignments, and every time I've done it, it's been very, very successful. At this point, the officers are embracing the idea because it is not so cumbersome that they can't do it within their work schedule. Next, I'd like to talk a little bit about our staffing. We currently have eight police officer vacancies, and of that, we have five candidates that are laterals that are in background processing right now, and we hopefully will get them through the process quickly so that number will go down. Also, we tested on February 9th, we tested 41 people that were interested in being a police officer with us, and of that, we are looking at about 12 people. Of course, anything in fire or police, it's a lot more difficult to get in because of the state requirements and whatnot. So that's where we are with that. One of the things, another thing as far as communication specialists go, right now we have five vacancies. Of the five, and this is a little bit, tiny bit convoluted, we have five people in training that hopefully will complete their training and be designated as dispatchers. And we also have three candidates that are in the background process that are laterals from other cities and wish to work with us, which is a very good thing. I attribute that to a couple of things. One, it's all based on the foundation of a lot of hard work that was done in the last year or two, but we recently hired a new deputy director and a new person to be the manager at dispatch, and both of them work in harmony and have done a wonderful job on revamping our process and making it a lot more desirable to even be, to consider working in Peoria PD. We also have one crime analyst that's in backgrounds right now, and of that, just to show how popular our city is, we had over 200 applicants from throughout the country apply for that position. We had internal candidates as well as external candidates, and we're down to one person that is in backgrounds right now, and hopefully that person will make it through backgrounds and we'll have a hire from that. I'd like to talk a little bit about our community involvement. That's me in the blue shorts freezing to death on the first Saturday of January at the Polar Plunge. You can see that we have our PPOA president there along with some other personnel. Some of the things that we do, again, police work is more than just handling radio calls and addressing issues that people call us for. It's huge to have community involvement, as we all know. One of the programs we have is Lunch with Blue, where we team up officers and they go have lunch with elementary school children to kind of make that connection in our community. The UCAN will continue until we can find out what it's defined as and how we want it to operate within our city, but Chris Hallett from the Neighborhood and Human Services has teamed up with the police department, and he is going to take a kind of a partnership role with me on that. And it almost seems as though his position and his department is just equally aligned to serving our community. He'll be speaking tomorrow at our UCAN meeting to talk about some of the services and how they can work with our community. We started a police academy last week. We had 30 people in attendance, and we do that once a year, and I'm going to look at seeing the possibility of doing it multiple times a year because the program is very, very popular. It fills up very, very quickly, almost the day that we put the notice out, it gets filled up. And again, that's to give our community an understanding of how we operate in the police department and what kind of services we can provide, and also give them hands-on experience with the police department. What we did in this particular academy is we condensed it down to eight weeks from 12, and it's going to be more hands-on and, you know, more gritty, if you will, rather than lectures and things like that. We continue to attend HOA meetings and residential meetings with our community at every area of our city. We have Jennifer Rosin is a new supervisor of that unit, and she is hands-on, she's at most of the events that I go to, and I'm sure she's gone to many others, but it just is an example of the commitment that we have to serving our community. I mentioned the Polar Plunge, again, an outreach to our community to be part of something that's very important as far as pool safety, and it was quite an experience, to say the least. We have an explorer program, which is very vibrant, and they're young people that are in our process to, again, help us out and to learn about police work and to see if there is some kind of, if that fits in their life down the road in terms of either being a police officer, animal control, a dispatcher, or any of the jobs that we have.
Chief, before you move on from community involvement, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So your HOA resident meetings, you're going to have one individual who's going to be going to all of them instead of the police officer who might be in that district?
No, we'll have, we'll have police officers there almost every single time, but then we have our civilian staff that'll help coordinate those, and we should, by and large, we should have an officer there at every single event. And if we can't assign someone, we'll just pull someone from the beat to go to those meetings.
Okay. I think the citizens really like that.
Oh, sure, sure. And actually, the officers do as well. I mean, to make that connection, the officers definitely do like that.
Yeah. And I just had one more question. Your volunteer program, that's not on here, right? That's not the Citizens Police Academy or the Explorer Program. You have another volunteer program, right?
We do have another volunteer program, and that is, it's very vibrant, and they're very helpful for us in terms of doing some of the administrative things that otherwise a sworn or full-time person would have to do. Thank you for reminding me about that.
Okay. Thanks. Council, anything? Right, go ahead.
Thank you. So when I came here, when I was hired, one of the things that I did is I met with our three unions to find out what are some things that I could do from my office to help better relationships and help move the department forward. One of the things that was mentioned was better communication, and what I do is to try to make myself as visible as possible throughout our department as often as possible. But one of the major things, at least it turned out to be a major thing, was the chief's message that I put out every month, and it's definitely a work in progress, but it's a video recording of myself talking about what's going on in the department, talking about initiatives. But more importantly, it's input that I get from officers and staff on what's important to them. And what's important to them are some of the crime trends, what's also important to them is some of the great things that they've been doing on an individual basis. We talk about marriages, newborns, we talk about great achievements they've done in their personal life, and it does have an effect of creating some kind of synergy, if you will, as far as moving our department forward. And that's been a very popular thing, and again, that's a work in progress, and I'm doing my best to keep it short, but also to be very informative. Another thing some of you may have experienced is I'm doing my best to keep you informed on significant incidents that happen throughout our city. I keep the deputy city manager, as well as the city manager, informed of the very significant, major things that might hit the media or might be a road closure or something that might affect a certain part of our community. So I want to continue with that communication with the council. Another thing is the external communication. I have Brandon Schefert, who is our PIO, and I've asked him to, at least a minimum, to get us on social media with stories at least two to three times a week to keep our message moving forward and to keep a positive light on our city and our department. So that's something that you may have seen an uptick in, and I'm hoping to continue with that. The other thing is creating new traditions. One of the things that I talked with the union membership is that some of the way we announce or display, I guess, our respect for people that retire, we changed that a little bit where instead of a handshake and "thank you" on the way out the back door, we actually make an event out of it. And we had three examples of that late in December and early in January, where we had three people retire at separate times. And it's been really good storytelling in terms of legacy that the officers get to provide, but then also their former partners and things like that also get to provide some storytelling. And again, I'm trying to create an environment where the tradition and the legacy that we each leave in our department will help move the department forward. I'm doing all I can to improve the culture of the department, not that it was bad at all, but I always say that if it was at a 10, I want to make it an 11 by the time I'm finished working here. And so we have great people working on that department. They're hardworking, they're dedicated, they're very focused on each one of their disciplines, and it's a joy to be around them, so much so that I make a point to be around them as often as I can. I'm in their workspaces to talk to them and find out what's important to them on a one-on-one basis, and that seems to be going over fairly well. And then the other part is, myself and my staff are open to any kind of formal, informal communication. We want to be as responsive as we can and give as much information as we can without violating any rules or any confidentiality or any crime investigation. So those are some of the things that we're doing, and I hope that sheds either a new light or adds light to when you already have.
Councilmember Finn?
Thank you, Mayor. I have just a few questions. I'll go wait till you're done. You're kind of unrolled there. I didn't want to interrupt you.
Okay.
So the very beginning, you talked about the study and some of the things that you all implemented from the study, and just from my experience, I know that a lot of times, things look great on paper, but when you get the officers involved or your employees involved, they say, hey, they're missing this piece. How much involvement did the officers have in some of the changes that you ended up making?
That's a great question. Before we made any of the changes, we evaluated it, we made a proposal, we had all three unions involved in the discussion, we had command staff, we had line-level officers have their input in there in the decision, and then we went forward with it. All of us understand that it may not be a perfect process in terms of how it's going to end up, but at least everyone had some input, and I'm not opposed to adjusting as necessary as we move forward.
Awesome, awesome.
Thank you.
So a couple more. So you mentioned the statistics, and you mentioned where that came from, and I apologize, I didn't catch that.
The UCR.
Okay, that's no change from the previous statistics, correct? It's the exact same?
Yes.
Okay, and we're interpreting the same way we're doing them?
Yes.
Okay.
So with the UCR, it's really difficult to manipulate these numbers. They are what they are, and good or bad, you will always get what they are in fact.
I just want to be able to make sure that in my mind, I'm comparing apples to apples.
It is apples to apples, yes.
Okay, great, perfect, awesome. So you also talked about vacancies, and we're 5%, I'm sorry, we had a few positions that were open on the officer side. I think we'd give an authorization over hire by a certain amount. So my question is, that percentage, is that based on the staffing roster, is that based on inclusive of the over-hiring percentage that we're allowed? Does that question make sense?
I might need a little help in that one.
I think I could probably help with that. That would be based off of the percentages that you were hearing, would not include the over-hire component of that. So that is just the sworn positions, the over-hire is considered to be an additional step that we use within our systems with your authorization.
Okay, great. And then you also talked about missing, or not missing, I'm sorry, we had five communication vacancies, five of how many?
27.
Of 27?
Right.
Okay. Okay, and I love your videos, by the way. They're awesome.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right, you can relax a little bit, and I'm not going to lie to you, but I love the videos.
No, 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 I'm good, I'm good.
They get better every month. That's all I have.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
Vice Mayor Binzbacher?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say too, first of all, I think it's wonderful that you've engaged, looked at the matrix and looked at the data, but also brought in the human element. That's just so important. The change you made to the beats, and again, this is, you know, I'm really relying on you to be the expert here, without a doubt. But to look at the map like that and see how you broke it down after, you know, driving the district and knowing it, especially my district being to the front, that just makes so much sense. And I appreciate you looking at this through new lenses and engaging all of the members to be part of that process.
Thank you.
I love the videos, and I like all the quirky things about the videos, too, not that you're quirky at all, but...
You started off so well.
But here's the thing, is that there is so much that happens within the department, and it's good to know what our officers, all levels, sergeants, lieutenants, everyone, are working on out there, and so we kind of have an idea of what's happening in our city, and it's just, it's a quick glance at that. Also, I love seeing all of the opportunity and promotion that's happening within internally like that, and all the movement, and that means I feel like we're doing something right when you see movement like that. And then the promotions, you know, these are folks maybe I will or won't cross paths with, but being able to hear their story and what they gave to our city and what they're adding to their families, and I really, really appreciate that addition, and I hope it's doing great things for morale because it's, you know, I'm happy when I see it.
Thank you.
So keep entertaining us.
Okay, will do.
Councilmember Hunt?
Well, I was a happy camper, too, when I watched that video, smiling from ear to ear. I think what it does for me, and have you done three so far, I think?
Four.
Four. It helps me feel like I get to know the officers, whereas I don't see 99% of them because they're out doing their thing. And so it really humanizes them in my eyes when they have a baby or they get married or whatever they do. And I also love that you are promoting from within. We have so many quality officers, and it's good to see them have a chance. They don't have to go to another city now. They have an opportunity to promote from within. The other thing I wanted to say is, in your decision-making, I love it that you're including your rank-and-file police officers because you're the head guy, quirky as you might be in Bridget's eyes. Sorry. You're it, and the buck does stop with you, but it's a lot better if you have a lot of input by the folks that are, the armies that are out there marching, because you can't possibly be everywhere that they are, every part of the city or every part of the day. So it's just really good for morale for them to feel like they're part of the game plan now, but also it's really good for you as a decision-maker to have that input and to know that you're making good decisions based on the folks that are out there fighting those battles. So I just think you're off to a roaring start, and keep it up.
Thank you.
Any else? All right, well, that was a big success.
Thank you.
We appreciate the update. Anything else?
No, I thank you very much again. Some of the large takeaways, really appreciate all that the chief has done to really immerse himself in the organization, and we're so excited to see the efforts of the entire department. When you look at what's happening with the trend down on response times, when you look at, again, another reduction in significant in all areas of the UCR crime index, we're real excited about that. More to come, obviously, in the budget discussions as we go forward, but we really appreciate the efforts going on.
Thank you. Good evening.
Keep up the good work. Thank you.[1557.23][1557.23][applause] Okay, so we will move on to medical services update, Mr. Tyne.
We can make this work. So next, we do, wanted to also offer an update within our emergency medical service. So today, we have Chief Bobby Reese, as well as EMS chief Jim Bradshaw, who will discuss some of the conditions and trends that we see in the city's ambulance service within our low-acuity vehicle program, and also the growing concept of community paramedicine.
Thank you.
Pass it over to you, chief.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, it's an honor to be in front of you and update you on our EMS process, and with me today, I have our EMS expert in the field, and he's going to update you on what we've been doing. Overall, we're going to be talking this evening about the EMS process, the emergency medical system, the ambulance service, the low-acuity vehicles, which are the non-emergency threatening vehicles, and community paramedicine, and then our next steps. And then be happy to answer any questions you may have. So I'm going to turn it over to Chief Bradshaw to give you an update, and then we'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chief Reese, and good evening, mayor and council. We'll just jump right in. We talked about some specific programs, but just an overview on EMS in general, some of our accomplishments in the last year. We were able to implement new cardiac monitors or put those in the field, thanks to support of city management and the council. Our previous cardiac monitors were somewhat dated and no longer supported by the manufacturer, so we had to look to a new product, and that, we've been able to upgrade the technology on that, and really, that piece of equipment is probably the most utilized piece of EMS equipment we have. It's vitally important to our care, and so we do appreciate that support and the ability to increase or to implement those cardiac monitors. We have updated the EPCR, the Electronic Patient Care Reporting System, to expand our data set and what we are able to measure, and that has been useful in our analytics and how we apply our resources and how we measure our successes and how we measure how we need to improve. We've augmented the quality assurance program, again, mostly through data and analytics, and increased the amount of call reviews that we do on a monthly basis. We've also renewed our EMS premier agency status, that's a status awarded by the Arizona Department of Health Services that recognizes superior EMS service, data, and quality assurance management. And we continue to refine and update our disposable medical supply system, which creates better efficiencies for us moving into the future and how we get resources to the boots on the ground, the folks that need it for EMS service delivery. Talk specifically about the ambulance program. We became operational in January 2017 with Phase 1. Phase 2, we're moving forward here shortly, and I'll talk more specifically about that in just a moment. Our two ambulances currently are at station 193 and 195. Since inception, we have completed a little over 7,500 transports. In the last calendar year, we did almost 3,700 transports. We've been busy, very successful with that implementation. We're very... Uh, we've been busy, very successful with that implementation, we're very happy with that. Phase Two, uh, in our, our efforts, in our plan to completely transition to a city-based service, uh, will, uh, take place here in the next few months. We have the additional rescues, we've almost completed all the training, uh, for all the personnel moving forward to that, and we'll, we'll kind of cap where, where we're going to go, uh, here in just a few slides. Uh, medical billing, uh, we were able to move that in-house, uh, thanks to a lot of support from the finance department and IT, uh, we were able to completely transition that system from a third-party billing service, uh, in-house in about one week, uh, and begin our medical billing process in-house, uh, shortly after the first of December. Uh, with that, we, we're already seeing increased efficiencies, and most important to us is superior customer service as we move forward, uh, with that component. The low-acuity unit, uh, that became operational in August of 2016, uh, that operates out of Station 192, which is essentially our busiest station. Uh, it is staffed with one paramedic and one EMT, and the focus of that unit is to respond to low-acuity calls or basic life support calls, non-threatening, uh, injury or assistance calls. Uh, it is capable of providing initial advanced care with the paramedic onboard in, in case they encounter a patient who needs that advanced care right away, and then can be supported with additional resources. We're, in this slide, we'll take a little bit of explanation, but we're, the, uh, low-acuity unit, uh, has decreased the Engine 192's BLS, Basic Life Support Call Volume by 18%. That requires a little bit more explanation in that Engine 192's call volume has not decreased, it's actually gone up. So basically what this has done is allowed Engine 192 to answer more advanced life support calls in their first due area and decrease reliance on the automatic aid system coming into their first due area. So it, it has done exactly what we had hoped it would do. Uh, it is filling that gap, uh, for the lower priori- I don't want to say lower priority, but less urgent calls, uh, and we're very happy with the success of that program and how it continues to move forward. Community paramedicine, uh, wanted to update you, and it's a little, we're a little late, but we haven't had the opportunity to talk about our grant program. Uh, we, we're in a year grant, uh, sponsored by the Vitalist, uh, Foundation in 2017, and we did get some results from that program that we're encouraging. Uh, total patient contacts on during that year were about, uh, a little over 750 patient contacts. We averaged about three visits per patient. Uh, the average age of the patient was about 70, and the average length of the call is about one hour and 10 minutes. Uh, this allows us to interact with the patients, uh, those people that are enrolled in the program, and really kind of delve into their needs and try to support them moving forward. Uh, one of the things that surprised us is that 90% of our people in the program did have insurance, did have primary care providers. What we were able to ascertain is they didn't know how to access those resources, and it was a matter of helping them navigate the healthcare system as they moved through, uh, the process. So it was either referral to their primary care, uh, a specialist, other community resources, or in some cases just simply getting them a walker that would help them avoid fall injuries, and they didn't have the resources to do that. And on an emergent basis, we really don't have the opportunity to delve into those needs. So it was really, uh, positive in what we were able to ascertain and, and, uh, services that we were able to deliver. One of the most, uh, significant, uh, statistics out of that program that we were able to measure is that we identified 74 of those people that we had, uh, enrollees in the program who had been frequent utilizers, very frequent utilizers of the 911 system for their healthcare needs. Uh, prior to the program of those 74, uh, people, they had accessed 911 447 times. During the program and shortly after the program, we measured their access to the 911 system and trips to the emergency room decreased to 54. So that was an 89% decrease overall in their utilization of the 911 system, and that basically was being able to give them other resources, uh, making them aware of other resources or connecting them to community resources that help meet their healthcare needs and not have to rely on the 911 system to do that. Overall, our next steps, uh, we talked a little about, about this, we hope to parlay the next two rescues at Station 191 and 192, uh, in April, uh, within the next two months. Uh, the, we'll continue to re, uh, define and, uh, basically, uh, increase efficiencies in our, uh, medical billing. The low-acuity unit, we continue to look at the data, the analytics on that on a, on a regular basis, and we'll continue to refine that response to see if we can get better results, uh, moving forward with the low-acuity unit. In community paramedicine, we continue, uh, to offer that, uh, on a part-time program with, uh, existing resources out in the community. We're still seeing successes, uh, but we're working hard to find partnerships, have discussions with, uh, vested partners in the healthcare system, and to hopefully possibly secure some grants in the future to move that program forward. And with that, we're, be happy to answer any questions.
Council? Yes, council member?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, um, I'm curious about, uh, from time to time as I'm driving around the city, I see another ambulance service. Um, who are they, and, uh, do they work in conjunction with the Peoria Fire and Medical? And, uh, as we continue to bring on more ambulances, will they eventually go away?
Mayor, Councilmember Patena? Yes, the answer is, is the, the, uh, other ambulance service that you see in the city is AMR. They're a national company. They took over PMT, which was the, uh, ambulance company that we used to use before, and then they got, PMT got bought out by Rome Metro, they went bankrupt, and then, so that's when we got into the business there, behooved us to, to, uh, provide a high level of service within the city without worrying about having to throw patients in the back of a fire truck, essentially, and, uh, so AMR has bought out, uh, the companies, and, and so our, uh, agreement with AMR was and is that as we come in, they go out. And so as we put in the next two ambulances, we'll pull two ambulances out of the system. Eventually, uh, hopefully by, by next year is they'll be out completely except by con- by contract is, is we got one more year in the contract, and they will back us up if we want to continue that relationship with AMR, where they back us up, then we'll, we'll continue that, but that'll be another discussion when we get there.
Thank you. My second question is, um, is that, who determines whether it's a low-acuity call? Does it happen at the 911 level or at the station?
It happens at the dispatch level. They have a, a protocol and an algorithm that they follow, and so based on the information they get, they either say it's, it's a high-acuity, um, call or a low-acuity call. So it's li- life-threatening or, or it's not. And, uh, when we get there, sometimes that changes, it could be a lower acuity than, than what was first reported on the information, or it could be bumped up to a high-acuity call.
Thank you. Yes, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. A comment and a question. Congratulations, by the way, on all of this. I think it's fantastic. I love seeing the results, being able to measure the impact of, of what's happening. Um, with the low-acuity calls that you, um, not the low-acuity, the community paramedicine, I know that's on a part-time basis, is any of that billable? Did we ever determine whether or not that, any of that is billable?
It, at, at this time, it is not.
It's not, okay.
Billable. Um, it's, the senators of, uh, or basically Medicare, uh, came out with a position statement a couple days ago where they are transitioning, uh, into, uh, a process to, uh, make that billable, alternate, uh, destinations, uh, that will phase in, uh, through 2019, 2020. Uh, so we're looking at that very, very closely. Uh, there is a, uh, a treat-and-refer, uh, program within the state, uh, overlaps a little bit with the community paramedicine. Uh, what we were looking for in that grant program was to, uh, see where we needed to be with that. What we're looking for in the future is, uh, how we can, uh, basically monetize or, or, uh, figure the cost for that program, cost delivery, and how we can offset the cost, uh, with either billable revenue, uh, or to insurance, or, uh, possibly partnerships, uh, with, uh, healthcare partners, uh, who have a vested interest in, in the healthcare savings.
That was kind of more what I was thinking, was kind of partnerships working together to, that's because it benefits everyone, but, and then with the rescues, do you, uh, are, is it the same, um, members that work those rescues that stay, that like to be there, or do you rotate them, or it's just such a demanding position?
Yes, they're all sworn members, and, and, uh, that did a, a couple of things for us. One is improved the level of service, the continuity care, so it has, the statistics show that if the person or persons that started the treatment continue that treatment all the way through the hospital.
No doubt.
And all, all the way to the end, the, the improvement in health goes up dramatically. And so that's the first piece. The other piece is that our service is also increased by the fact that when we used to, in the system where there was pri- nothing but private ambulance, is our paramedic would start the treatment, then have to jump on the ambulance, go to the hospital, and then the fire truck had to go follow them and pick our medic up. Now in this system is if the medic and the engine company gets there first and starts treatment, you could always swap those medics with the ambulance medics, and so the medic that started the treatment can jump on, on the rescue, go to the hospital, continue the care, and just swap the medic from the, the ambulance to the fire truck and leave the fire truck there in service in that first due area. So it increases the.
Much more efficient, yeah.
Yeah, instead of being down for an hour is you get the, the, the truck back in service right away.
Wonderful, thank you.
Councilmember Hunt?
With MIHS moving in here so closely, do you see that as a possible partnership, uh, for the, um, paramedicine?
I believe we've, uh, had some, uh, generic or overarching conversations with the, uh, MIHS folks. Uh, we certainly, we welcome all partnerships, uh, within the community, and that would be one we would, we would welcome.
I would think that, uh, just like it cuts down on the 911 calls, that it would significantly cut down on their walk-ins that feel that that is their level of service, whereas you guys could go to the home and, and provide the same level of service, probably better because you follow through with them.
Those are all models that, that we look at and we hope to move forward, forward with as we, as we continue to refine and build that program and find partners.
Well, again, congratulations on all your steps that you're moving forward. It's, it's fun to watch, it's exciting, as our city grows, and you guys are growing right along with us.
Hi, I come, oh, council member?
Finn.
Finn. Patena, Finn, got it.
I just have one quick question. Um, you mentioned some, uh, improvements and efficiencies on the, um, billing side. Where are we at, um, with respect to expenses versus revenues? I think we're, at some point, we were going to be looking to break even, I'm just curious how close we're, we're about where we're at.
We're, we're breaking even.
Okay.
Yeah.
Congratulations, that's awesome.
Thank you.
That's fantastic, okay. I won't dig into too many numbers in detail, that's the answer that I was looking for.
I kind of sensed that.
Tells me what I needed, thank you.
A financial question coming. Thank you.
Um, community paramedicine, I just have to bring this up one more time. You know, I'm a big fan of this. It's an area that we can, that we could actually, you know, get out in front of and be proactive and, and actually control our fate a little bit instead of being reactive. I would really like us to see, um, I would like to see us expand this program as quickly as we possibly can. I think, obviously, your statistics, 89% decrease in use of 911 system is huge, is a huge statistic. So for us to be able to say that we're not only taking care of people in a, in a better, more effective way, um, but we are decreasing the use of our other facilities and our other services and our other, um, uh, personnel, you know, I mean, it's, it just makes so much sense. It's like saying in the medical industry that you want to, that you want to cover wellness, you know? Let's get them before they get sick. It just makes a lot of sense, and I think it's such a benefit to our citizens, so I'd really like for us to look at ways that we can, um, get this service, uh, started up again full-time. Just had to say it.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, then we are, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah. We are adjourned until our 7:00 PM meeting.